The vision of the Church of God Temple in the year 2025 is anchored in the transformative truth of Hebrews chapter four and verse 11. Let us labor therefore to enter into that rest. This year, we are called to embrace and embody the profound rest found in Jesus Christ, a rest that frees us from striving and positions us to live in the fullness of what Christ has already provided. To labor to rest means to let go of self-effort and the false belief that we must do something to motivate God to love us, answer our prayers, or meet our needs. It means ceasing from works that seek to earn God's blessings and stepping into the truth that in Christ we already have everything we need. This rest is not passive. It requires intentional effort to hold fast to God's promises in the face of life's challenges. When fear, doubt, and pressure arise, when the doctor's report seems final, when financial stress looms, or when hope feels distant, we are called to labor to believe what God has already said. This year, let us labor to enter into God's rest so that His power may be fully manifest in every area of our lives, that we may claim by faith what is already ours because of what Christ has already done.
Good evening and welcome to Bible Study held here at the Church of God Temple located on Peachtree Street in the beautiful city of Freeport Grand Bahama. I invite you to get your Bibles, your notepads, and your pens as we decide to study the Word of God together. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity to study Your Word and to grow in the wisdom and knowledge of you. Thank you for what you have laid on my heart to give to your people. May this Word edify and strengthen them during their Christian walk. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. The study for tonight is going to continue under the topic we've been going over for the past few weeks, and the topic is the Holy Spirit. I'm going to do something a little different tonight because what I will do is recap on the Holy Spirit, and I'm going to give you four truths about the Holy Spirit. You see, when we talk about our relationships, our families, our friends, even sometimes our jobs, or things that we're really interested in, we're confident, we speak with Him. Why? Because there's an interest, a relationship that should be. If someone were to ask, "What would you be able to describe him and say what he does in the believer's life?" Well, hopefully tonight, after we go over these four truths, you'll be able to see the Scriptures and go on to further find and make that relationship with the Holy Spirit. The first truth about the Holy Spirit that I want to talk about tonight is that the Holy Spirit is a person. The Holy Spirit is a person. Under this heading, we're going to look at some truths that fall under this. We're going to look at Genesis, chapter one, verse one and two, and then also verse 26, and then we're going to turn over to Matthew, chapter 28, and verse 19. "God created the heaven and the earth; and the earth was without and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep; and the Spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters." Verse 26. "And God said, 'Let us make man in our image, after our likeness; and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth.'" Before I move from Genesis to Matthew, I want to say that from this Scripture we see that the Holy Spirit was around from the beginning. How do we know that? Well, we can start with Genesis 1:1. "In the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth." And the last part of verse two says, "And the Spirit of God moved upon the face of the waters." So we know that the Holy Spirit has been here from the beginning of time. The second truth that I want to get out of Genesis is in verse 26. It starts off saying, "And God said," and then those next seven words are what's important here. "Let us make man in our own image." Let us. The use of "us" and not "me" means that there is a plurality to God. So we know that the Holy Spirit is God, and He was around from the beginning of the world. But we're now going to find out about the plurality of God. So we're going to get our last truth for this section, which is found in Matthew 28 and 19. And that truth is that the Holy Spirit is the third person in the Godhead. Matthew 28:19 reads, "We therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost." Here it is in this passage of Scripture. Jesus is speaking to His disciples. He is giving them instructions before He leaves to go back to His Father. And in His instructions, He mentions the Trinity. That's the plurality of God. God in three persons, a blessed Trinity. And that Trinity is the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. So from the first truth that we've studied for tonight is that the Holy Spirit is a person. He is God. He is the third person in the Godhead, and He was around from the beginning of the world. The second truth that I'd like to go over tonight is the Holy Spirit was sent by God. For this, we're going to look at some core Scriptures. We're going to look at John, chapter 14, verse 16, verse 18, and verse 26. We'll also look at John 16 and verse 7, and John 7 and 39. We're looking at these Scriptures because we know the Holy Spirit was sent by God. And the point I want from these Scriptures is that the Holy Spirit could not come until Jesus returned to heaven, but He is the Comforter that was promised. The first Scripture we'll look at is John 16 and 7, which reads, "Nevertheless, I tell you the truth. It is expedient for you that I go away; for if I go not away, the Comforter will not come unto you; but if I depart, I will send him unto you." The next chapter we'll look at is John 14, reading verse 16 and verse 18. Verse 16 reads, "And I will pray the Father, and he shall give you another Comforter, that he may abide with you forever." Verse 18, "I will not leave you comfortless. I will come to you." Verse 26 in the same chapter, "But the Comforter, which is the Holy Ghost, whom the Father will send in my name, he shall teach you all things, and bring all things to your remembrance, whatever I have said unto you." The last text I would like to look at is John 7 and 39. "But this spake he of the Spirit, which they that believed on him should receive; for the Holy Ghost was not given yet, because Jesus was not yet glorified." So from these Scriptures, the last one that I read, you see that Jesus was speaking to His disciples, and He was letting them know that "I will send you a Comforter. But the Comforter cannot come while I'm here. I must go away. I must go to my Father. Once I go to my Father, then the Comforter will be sent. We will not leave you comfortless." The second point I want to look at under this truth is that the Holy Spirit is the Spirit of truth and will testify of Jesus. Let's look at John 15 and 26, and after, John 14 and 17. John 15 and 26 reads, "But when the Comforter is come, whom I will send unto you from the Father, even the Spirit of truth, which proceedeth from the Father, he shall testify of me." John 14 and 17 reads, "Even the Spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it seeth him not, neither knoweth him; but ye know him, for he dwelleth with you and shall be in you." This Scripture is basically self-explanatory. But if we look at Jesus's ministry when He was here on earth, everything that Jesus did, He did as instructed by His Father. He always said that He was carrying out the works of His Father. Well, the Holy Spirit, as we can see from the Scripture, has also been sent by the Father, and His job is to speak about Jesus. So the Holy Spirit will help to enlighten the believer about the truth because He is the Spirit of truth. You may ask, "What is the truth that the Holy Spirit is enlightening the believer about?" The Holy Spirit speaks about the truth that Jesus is the way, the truth, and the light, and that He is the only way, the only way, to achieve eternal life. So the Holy Spirit tries with our born-again, um, our born-again, I'm sorry, spirit man, so that we can stay connected to the only way to achieve eternal life, and that is through Christ Jesus, who the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of truth, will speak about. So from our second truth, the Holy Spirit was sent by God. These are the points that we know. We know that the Holy Spirit could not come until Jesus returned to His Father. We know that the Holy Spirit is the Comforter that was promised. We know that the Holy Spirit is the Spirit of truth and will testify of Jesus. The third truth that I'd like to talk about is that the Holy Spirit is for the believer. The Holy Spirit is for the believer. We're going to look at John 17, and then 1 Corinthians 2 and 14, Ephesians, chapter one, verse 13 and 14, and also John, chapter four, and verse 24. I'll read Ephesians 1, 13, and 14 first. And for some Scriptures, I know that the King James Version is a little bit more difficult to understand. For this particular one, I will also read the easy-to-read version of the Bible of the same Scripture. Ephesians 1 and 13 reads, "In whom ye also trusted, after that ye heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation; in whom also after that ye believed, ye were sealed with that Holy Spirit of promise." And verse 14, "Which is the earnest of our inheritance until the redemption of the purchased possession unto the praise of his glory." And now from the easy-to-read version, 13 says, "It is the same with you. You heard the true message, the good news about the way God saves you. When you heard that good news, you believed in Christ. And in Christ, God put His special mark on you by giving you the Holy Spirit that He promised. The Spirit is the first payment that guarantees we will get all that God has for us. Then we will enjoy complete freedom as people who belong to Him. The goal for all of us is the praise of God in all His glory." The next Scripture I'd like to read is John 14 and 17. John 14 and 17 reads, "Even the Spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it seeth him not, neither knoweth him; but ye know him, for he dwelleth in you, with you, and shall be in you." 1 Corinthians 2 and 14 reads, "But the natural man receiveth not the things of the Spirit of God, for they are foolishness unto him; neither can he know them, because they are spiritually discerned." The truth that we're getting to in this section is that the Holy Spirit is for the believer. The world cannot accept the Holy Spirit. It is a gift to the believer, and we see that when we look at Ephesians. It says, "When you have heard the true message and the good news about the way God saves you, and you have believed in Christ, and in Christ, He put God, God is that He, He put that special mark on you, and that is the Holy Spirit that was promised." When Jesus was speaking to His disciples in John, chapter 14, He let them know, "Even the Spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it seeth him not, neither knoweth him; but ye know him, for he dwelleth in you and shall be in you." So we see here that to have the Holy Spirit, we must be a believer. John 4 and 24 tells us that God is a Spirit, and they that worship Him must worship Him in spirit and in truth. We see that also back in Genesis, chapter one and 26, where He said, "And God said, 'In our image and in our likeness.'" We have already determined that God is a Spirit. So as a believer, what part of us is accepting that gift? What part of us is getting the knowledge from the Holy Spirit? Our born-again spirit man. Our born-again spirit man that has received a new nature, who has heard the good news, who has accepted Christ, and in Christ, God has given us the promise of the Holy Spirit. Under this section, I'd also like to say, the Holy Spirit reminds and teaches us. John 14 and 26 reads, "But the Comforter, which is the Holy Ghost, whom the Father will send in my name, he shall teach you all things, and bring all things to your remembrance, whatsoever I have said unto you." Well, we've already established what the Spirit of truth will be talking about. He will be talking about Jesus. He will be reminding us about Jesus. He will be reminding us about the way, the truth, and the life. And as we study and meditate on the Word, He's going to bring the Word back to us, to edify us, to strengthen us. I want to give a few things that the Holy Spirit reminds us about. There are many things, many Scriptures, but I'm going to give a few. 2 Corinthians 5, verse 17, reads, "Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature; all things are passed away; behold, all things are become new." Verse 21 reads, "For he hath made him to be sinned for us, who knew no sin, so that we might be made the righteousness of God in him." We've already seen that we get the seal of the Holy Spirit. But these Scriptures remind us who we are and to who we belong. It lets us know that our born-again spirit man, as soon as we have accepted the gift of salvation, we are now changed. We have a new nature. All things are passed away, and all things become new. It lets us know that when God is looking at us now, we are in Christ. He no longer sees our sin, because He's already given His Son to die for us, to take on all the sin of the world. So He no longer sees that. He sees His Son, because we are in Christ, and because we are in Christ, we are righteous. But you have to read that Scripture and know that Scripture for the Holy Spirit to bring it to your remembrance. Another Scripture that a lot of people look at is Philippians 4 and 13, which says, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." You are strengthened because you are in Christ. So the Holy Spirit reminds you and lets you know that all things are possible to Him that believeth, but you have to be in Christ. The last Scripture I'd like to look at in this section is Romans, chapter eight, and I'm going to read verse 14, 15, and 16. And it reads, "For as many as are led by the Spirit of God, they are the sons of God; for ye have not received the Spirit of bondage again to fear, but ye have received the Spirit of adoption, whereby we cry, 'Abba, Father!' The Spirit itself bears witness with our spirit that we are the children of God." So here it is. The Spirit, the Holy Spirit, bears witness with our spirit, and it reminds us, we are the sons of God. We can boldly say, "Abba, Father, we've been, we've gone through the adoption of sons in Christ Jesus." The last thing in this section that I'd like to talk about is that the Holy Spirit convicts the believer. For this, we'll look at Romans, chapter 12, and verse two. Romans, chapter 12, and verse two reads, "And be not conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that ye may prove what is that good, and acceptable, and perfect will of God." I'd also like to look at 1 John, chapter two, and verse 16. 1 John 2 and 16 reads, "For all that is in the world, the lust of the flesh, and the lust of the eyes, and the pride of life, is not of the Father, but of the world." You see, the Holy Spirit speaks with our born-again, transformed spirit mind. He helps us to overpower and overcome sin, and He leads us into all truth. He convicts us. He lets us know when we are being tempted to do something wrong, and He reminds us that you are a son of God. You are God's child. That's who you are, and that's to whom you belong. The Holy Spirit produces fruit in us, such as love, peace, and joy, which shows the life of Christ growing within us. The Bible tells us in Hebrews, chapter 12, and verse six, that "The Lord loveth those who he chastises." And I'm going to read that Scripture, because I paraphrased just now, and it says, "For whom the Lord loveth, he chastens it, and scourges every son whom he receives." Isn't that awesome to know that God loves us so much, that He has the Holy Spirit convicting us so that we can stay on the straight and narrow? That's awesome. So under this truth, that the Holy Spirit is for the believer, we see that the Holy Spirit is a gift to the believer and cannot be accepted by the world. We see that the Holy Spirit reminds and teaches us about the truth. And lastly, we see the Holy Spirit convicts the believer. The fourth and final truth I'd like to go over tonight is that the Holy Spirit lives in you. The Holy Spirit lives in you, and we'll look at John, chapter 14, and verse 16. And it reads, "I will pray the Father, and he shall give you another Comforter, that he may abide with you forever." The next Scripture I'd like to read is 1 Corinthians, chapter three, and verse 16. And it says, "Know ye not that ye are the temple of God, and that the Spirit of God dwelleth in you?" We'll flip over to a few chapters, to chapter six in 1 Corinthians, and look at verse 19 and 20. And it reads, "What? Know ye not that your body is the temple of the Holy Ghost, which is in you, which ye have of God, and ye are not your own? For ye were bought with a price; therefore glorify God in your body, and in your spirit, which are God's." And I'm going to read those same two verses from the easy-read version, which says, "You should know that your body is a temple, for the Holy Spirit that you received from God, and that lives in you. You don't own yourself. God paid a very high price to make you His. So honor God with your body." I think this is self-explanatory, but I'll go into it a little bit. The Holy Spirit is living within us. We received the gift of the Holy Spirit when we received the gift of salvation. We must honor God by honoring His Word with our spirit man and our bodies. That means you ain't going to just have your body... That means you ain't going to just have your body all over the place. If you're a prostitute, you're not going to be doing that anymore. If you're someone who used to use drugs, you're not going to do that anymore. If you're someone who was an alcoholic, you're not going to do that anymore. You're going to honor your body as a temple of the Lord. The latter part of verse 20 says, "God paid a high price for you to make you His. That high price was that He made His Son to be sin, to die for us, to take away our sins, to pay our debt that we were unable to pay." We just read that in 2 Corinthians 5 and 21. That's a high price that He paid for us. Is there anyone out there that would sacrifice their one and only child for someone else, someone they did not know? God did that for us. I also want to talk a little bit about the temple. You see, because in times past, God dwelled in the temple, in the Holy of Holies. This was an area where only the head priest was allowed to go. So if you, as an individual, wanted to speak to God, you had to go first to the priest, and then let him make his petition to God for you. You see, the Jews who were God's chosen people even looked down on nations that said they served God, but did not go in the temple. One such nation is the Samaritans. And if we look in John, chapter 4, we see the very familiar story of the woman at the well. And I'm not going to go into the story. I'm going to leave that for you to go and study on your own to gain more insight. What I want to say is, we do not have to go to a priest to talk to God, because His Spirit lives in us and communes with us. We can speak to God for ourselves. We can talk to God in the shower. We can talk to God when we're cooking. We can talk to God when we're driving. We can talk to God at any time. We can feel bold to go before the throne of grace, to obtain mercy, and to obtain help. So under this last truth about the Holy Spirit, I want you to remember that the Holy Spirit will be with you and in you forever, and that your body is a temple of God. Well, that brings us to the end of the study for tonight. I want to thank you for joining us as we went over four truths about the Holy Spirit. I know that was a lot of Scripture text, and you may not have been able to write everything down. I entreat you to go back online, review the study so that you can get the Scriptures and continue studying on your own, and of course, when we meet again for our next study on the Holy Spirit. In closing, I want to remind all of you that the Holy Spirit is a person. He was sent by God. He is a gift to every believer, and that He lives in you. I want to give a special invitation to all of those listening to us on our online platforms to join us every Sunday morning at 10:00 a.m. for morning worship. I invite you to partner with us as we share and spread the Word of God by liking and subscribing to our online channels. For those who wish to be a blessing to this ministry, you can do so financially by clicking on the GiveLify link that should be on screen. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the Holy Spirits that lives inside our transformed Spirit Man. May the wisdom and knowledge we received be a guiding light as we work towards continually renewing our minds to that of Christ. Bless all those who are yet to receive the gift of salvation, and let tonight's Word be a thorn that pricks their heart and pushes them toward towards wanting to know more and more about Christ Jesus. This we pray, in Jesus's name, amen. Good night, and be blessed. Until next time.
Thank you for watching our broadcast, streamed live here at the Church of God Temple in Freeport, Bahamas. This year, our aim is to rest in God's promises. As we embrace the finished work of Jesus Christ, we invite you to join us in living out this truth and sharing God's Word with the world. On behalf of our senior pastor, Reverend Judy Bethel, the officers, and members of the Church of God Temple, we're so excited to connect with you. Join us every Sunday for our Sunday morning worship at 10:00 a.m., and every Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. for Bible study. We can't wait to see you soon.